Row call.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher. Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight. City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May the 10th, 2016. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
We have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Thank you. There's nothing under item four for proclamations. Item five, communication. City Administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
First thing, I want to bring everybody kind of up to speed on the situation with the animal shelter. Of course, we had, you know, we had a pretty heated, lengthy discussion on it last time. And just to bring you up to date on where we are, at the following Thursday after the last meeting, Tina and I met with the Humane Society and discussed this issue with them. And we also received a letter from their attorney which states that if we turn the operation of the shelter over to them, they will walk away and close it. And so we certainly don't want that to happen. We don't need that to happen. It's never been our intention for that to happen. And what we have discussed with them at the meeting that we had with them, and what we agreed to in principle, because ultimately it would be y'all's decision, but that if they would pay us the money that's owed us to recompense us for the operations cost. Now, this has nothing to do with anything but the day-to-day operations, that we will continue on as we were before. But, and they had promised that they would get us our money. And as of today, we've received $10,000 so far. They asked that we send them an invoice explaining, you know, what was owed, and so we did that. And they told us they were putting another check in the mail last week, but we have not received that. So, right now, that's kind of where we are.
How much, Mr. Fincham, do we lack on that? What being sort of compensated back?
Well, they still owe us about $60,000.
That's money from the rolling rescue?
It was generated by, yes, sir.
Yes. The $10,000 plus the $61,000 that they still owe.
Correct.
Came from the rolling rescue.
Yes, sir. So that's kind of where we are. We, you know, we, like I say, we've agreed in principle to move forward as everything was before, as long as we, you know, we get our money that's owed to us, so the taxpayers don't have to pay it. It's not being spent, because it's monthly, daily expenses. And so the money, you know, it's not like it was money we were going to use for something. It's already been used. It's been, you know, we spent it incrementally throughout the year.
Did they indicate this next check, how much it was?
No, sir. They just said, they just called me and said, "We've put you another check in the mail, and you should be getting it in a day or two." And I didn't ask how much it was. I said, "Thank you. You know, we've sent you an invoice as requested." And they had not received it as, at that point, or indicated they had not. So, we're working. We're trying to work it out. And it's our goal to work it out.
I appreciate you working, trying to work this out. Like you said, nobody in the city wants to close down animal shelter. That's a father's thing or mine. But, and I think we're making progress. I appreciate you entertaining and meeting with them and explaining, going over stuff with them, and I thank you. They made us halfway, doing what they're supposed to do. I think that we'd be all right. We've made a lot of progress about this so far.
Well, we were very clear, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. We were very clear at the meeting with them that if the monies hadn't been withheld, we wouldn't be at this point. That that, you know, and they asked that question. One of their board members asked, you know, if the monies, if we had paid you the monies, would this, would this stuff be happening? And I said, "No. If we'd received our money, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation." So, that, you know, that, just want to make it very clear to people that that was what set this whole thing in motion.
Well, Dean, what about the repairs at the shelter? Don't they have some $90,000 repairs that's going to have to be done?
They've sent, I don't know about, I haven't ever heard that figure. They sent me a, with that $10,000 check, there was a quote for repairs for $10,660 or something like that. And the one thing about the roof, there's definitely, the roof needs repairs. The question is, and I've discussed this with Mr. Knight, he's not here, because he's a real estate guy. My understanding is that the problem with the roof was created during the construction phase of the building. And so, and again, this is just trying to look at it, you know, from a legal standpoint. If the problem was in the construction, and it was existing before we leased the building, then are we responsible for it? Now, we have a maintenance agreement that says we will maintain and do repairs to the building as needed. But my question to Mr. Knight was, from his experience, was that something we would be liable for? Because it was there when we rented or leased it. We didn't create it. We didn't tire something up. It didn't wire out. It wasn't done from routine wire and tire or use. It's a problem that goes back to construction. And so, it was his opinion that we should not be responsible for it, or at the very least, not for the entire amount. Because it's not something we done from the result of any of the use of the building. It goes back to the way the building was constructed. And one thing I have learned during this entire process that I did not know, because I wondered, well, how did they do that? Because, you know, it's not the code. You know, it was never built to code. And what I've learned is, it's not in the city. The animal shelter is not inside the city limits. And so, by that, they didn't have to get a building permit, and they didn't have to build it to code. So, it was not built to code when it was constructed. And of course, it's kind of understandable. It was done with volunteers. You know, they didn't hire a contractor to come in and build it. They, it's kind of like a habitat house in a way. You know, they got people to volunteer on weekends to come in and help do stuff, and it was, you know, it was put together that way. And so, the roof, again, as I understand it, now, I'm not a, you know, I'm not a contractor, but the way it's been put to me is the roof problem was a result of the way it was constructed. So...
How old is the roof, James? Do you know?
Well, I think it was built in 95. Not, because I'm the lease, we leased it in 96, September of 96. So I'm guessing it was built sometime during 95, 96.
So the roof's about 20 years old then?
Yeah.
Is it a metal or?
Metal, yes, sir. It's not, it's not just the metal. It's how it was constructed underneath. The way I understand it, the entire thing needs to be torn out and rebuilt, not just put a roof on. This is not, you know, if this was, the roof was worn out, like shingles wire out, you know, anything wires out. This is not what that is. This is tearing out the entire ceiling, the roof, the whole roof, and rebuilding a roof. It's not just putting on new tin or new shingles. It's not that at all.
Mr. Fincham, don't though, if you put back the money for it, the city's going to pay for it, don't you have to have bids and stuff?
Yes, sir. Well, yeah, if it's, yeah, for that amount, you'd have to bid that out. And I, you know, I made that point repeatedly. But yes, sir, that's correct.
It's not been bid at?
No, we've done...
X amount of money is what they're wanting?
Right. Well, they've had a contractor look at it, and this is his quote on what it's going to take to tire it out and rebuild it. $10,662, I think it's, 62 or something like that. Yeah, we would have to bid that out if we, you know, at that, at the point where we, if we were going to do it.
And it would come through the city, it wouldn't come through the rolling rescue, instead of...
Not if we do it, no.
That's what...
But my question is, and of course, you know, you, and I know Terry's not a contractor, lawyer, a building lawyer, but that's why I went to Mr. Knight, because he's in real estate, and he deals with these kinds of things. And I wish he was here so he could kind of tell you what he told me. But he says that, that from his experience, that would, that that should go back on the property owner. Because if it was, if it existed when we leased it, then it's a pre-existing condition that we had no role in. So I don't know. You know, that's, that's up, that's up to be debated and negotiated, I guess.
I guess. And if there's no, if they don't have the money to repair the roof, then I guess we're without an app, without a...
Well, that would be, I mean, that'd be up to you all, if you all want to appropriate the money to do it. That would be up to you. Bobby, I, we were, just to bring you up to speed right quick, we were talking about the animal shelter roof, and I was, I was telling the conversation that you and I had the other day about leasing a property that has a pre-existing condition, would the, would the leasee, the renter, be responsible for that? Or should the property owner bear some responsibility if it was a pre-existing condition when we leased it? And that's what we were talking about.
The cookie and our money was owed with the rolling rescue. I mean, you've not got too big a problem about trying to help fix roofs, is that correct?
Well, I don't have a problem with trying to help fix the roof.
Right.
You know, I never did, helping. But, but for us to take on the full amount, I just, me personally, as a layperson, as far as real estate deals go, I didn't feel like that the city should be liable for something that was there when we leased it. We didn't tire it up. It didn't wire out. You know, we were responsible for anything that we tire up, anything, put to paint it, fix anything tires up, those kinds of things. That's, that's pretty clear cut. But when it existed, when you, prior to you leasing it, and they want you to go back to something that's been there for over 20 years, and there's, there's no doubt it's going to have to be done. There's no question about it. It's going to have to be done. But, I, you know, it just seemed to me, looking at it from a common sense perspective, that the owner would have to bear some responsibility if they leased it to you with a pre-existing condition, that they now want repaired at your expense. It just didn't seem logical to me, and Bobby said it, it didn't seem logical to him that that would be, that we would be responsible for that under the terms of this agreement.
If we had to get an engineer to determine whether or not that was a precondition, pre-existing condition?
No, it's, no, it's, no, they've said that from the jump.
Who has?
Everybody that's went and looked at it. They said when the roof was done, these things should have been done, and they weren't done when, when it was built.
I think when we get to this position, though, I think we're going to have to have some professional to look at it and see whether or not it's a precondition.
Well, if it was never put, it's not there now. It wasn't put there when it was done, so, I mean, whatever.
Well, these reputable contractors that you, that you looked at it?
The, we, I'm not, I sent our people out there to look at it, too. I've sent. Now, the people, the other people, Mr. Brandon has sent out there to look at it. And they're all, they're all in agreement, this was not, this was something that wasn't done when it was built.
James, can I share what maintenance staff says? James has requested our maintenance staff to look at it quite a few times, along with leasing. And what we've got is, we've got a metal roof that's sitting on slats. It's not dead. And so, the insulation part of the building, it's a block building with some insulation on top of the sheet rock. And so the heat rises, and when it's cold outside, it causes the metal to sweat, because it's, it has no barrier between the insulation and the metal. And so when the heat rises and it hits the tin, it causes the metal to sweat, and it rains in their head. And so the building, the insulation, the sheet rock, all just drains inside the building. Then it ends up in the electrical lights, right? And then when you drop the lights, the change of bulb, you've got all this water that comes out of the light. So there's no barrier between the insulation and the metal. So the one thing that will help correct that is the decking with some type of tar paper or some type of paper that will allow that water to hit that decking, then roll off of the building into the gutter or to the edge of the building, instead of it coming down into the building. So it's got, it's got a major problem.
So it's very similar to the problem we have at the Memorial Building?
No. No, I haven't, I haven't seen that one, because they have a, they have a decking...
They just put the...
They just attached it straight to the...
Shingles.
Was it slate, slate?
They put the slats on the shingles down there. I mean, it's, it's not the same.
There is no decking here. It's on like two-inch slats.
Well, it's a decking on the Memorial Building?
Yes. It'll be that, it'll be that, it'll be boards, you know.
Yeah, but it's not...
No, it's not like, it's not like plywood. And that's the problem with this, and that's what our man had told us.
Yeah.
That the problem is, because they'll have issues, and they request us to go look at it, and it's raining.
I had the same thing this week. The place I've gone, the same exact thing, told me what was happening. They told me I didn't put it on our radie, so I know where it's coming from.
So with no decking, the water comes straight into the building. So if there was decking there, the water would hit the tar paper and run off. And it's the same at the community center. We have three-inch boards, we have an air gap, we have metal. So when the metal sweats, it runs to the, to the tar paper, then it runs out to the gutters. And so that's what problems the building, and that's what we have found when James has sent us out there. That's the problem with the roof.
One of the things that they were doing, they, when I came in three years ago down here, they were sending people out to do work and sending us the bills. And what I did was, number one, I told them that all that stuff would have to be pre-approved by us, or we wouldn't pay the bills. They couldn't just have stuff done and send us. And the second thing I did, instead of paying somebody else to do the work, I started pulling Tim's people away from what they were doing to go out there and, and do some of the work instead of hiring it all done, you know. And that has helped a whole lot. When, when I pulled Tim's people, that puts them behind on their regular stuff. And of course, that's one of the reasons we've put these part-time positions in for him to have, to help do some of this mowing and stuff. And it's to try to free up people to be able to do these kinds of things that we have citywide. We have issues at the police department. We have issues here at City Hall. And Tim's people are the ones we turn to when we need those things done. And it's a big need that we have for some, some folks, and they have the technical skills to be able to go out and do these repairs. And I don't know about doing this whole roof. I'm not saying that. I'm talking about roof maintenance. And so, when they started going out there and, and doing some of the work, that cut down on some of this maintenance cost, because they were just hiring somebody to go do it and then sending us the bill. But it's much cheaper for us to do it ourselves if we can, and it's, then you just have to buy the material. Okay. Last thing on the animal shelter before we move on, just for, for total transparency and honesty or whatever, they, during the last meeting, when we talked about that, when we checked with the surrounding area, we didn't find any other animal shelter that was run by government. And of course, they disputed that and brought up Blunt County. And we checked, and Blunt County is run by the county. The city's put in money into the kitty to help fund it, but it is run by Blunt County. So I just wanted to make clear, when we, we didn't call, just like I said that night, we didn't call every shelter in the country. We just called the ones around us, you know, and none, none of them are. None of the ones around us are run by government.
They didn't have any city that was taking care of the shelter. Is that correct, what I read?
Well, we haven't found, Blunt County runs that.
That's what I meant, I mean, there's no city, like they said it was, I didn't see any.
But we, I wanted just to make that clear, because they said we were misrepresenting it, because we said we, and we didn't find one. But they were right, that one, Blunt County is run by the county. And I just wanted to self-report that to show that, for total openness and honesty, that we didn't, we didn't check with them. We just checked with all the surrounding counties is who we checked with. Okay. Tonight starts the Rhythm on the River. It's supposed to start at seven o'clock in the back. I hope the weather will cooperate. They've got it set up and looking very nice back there. They've worked all day. Our people's helped get everything cleaned up and mowed, and the Chamber folks and the partnership folks have come and got everything set up. And those things will be going June 2nd, 16th, and 30th, July 14th, 28th, and the 28th, 7 to 9 in the back. And we've got that info on our website and on our Facebook page and all that to make sure it's out there for the folks. And so, we encourage y'all to come. Like I say, hope the weather cooperates, and I hope that's, everybody, the crowds weren't big last year, but they were enthusiastic, and everybody that was ours said they were having a good time. So we're, it's going to be a little bigger this year and do a few more dates this year. I think it's a good thing that the partnership's doing, and we appreciate them. Department reports are not in your packet, because this meeting was so far forward in the month. Department reports cannot be compiled until after the first of the month. And of course, Monday was a holiday. So department reports are not included in your packets. They will be available on June 10th, and we're going to be emailing those out to you or giving them to you by paper copy or whatever that you need to get. But we will be getting those to you on June the 10th. The TML conference that starts on the 12th, we'll be getting those packets delivered to you on June the 9th for that. If y'all didn't notice, we've got the new, Welcome to Newport signs up. They were put up last Friday. That was our goal, to have them up prior to the Memorial Day weekend. They are up out next to Crystal and up next to Wiggles are the two Welcome to Newport signs. I think they look really good. Check them out. We're also going to landscape them a little better now. We're waiting to get the signs up to do any work around them, because they didn't want to fix it up and then them have to get in there to do the work. So we are going to try to, and we're really going to try to get them looking good for the, for July 4th holiday. The last thing I have, and this is strictly for your consideration, we'll talk about it more later. The county recently voted to pay their planning commission members, and at the last planning commission meeting, I was in attendance, and prior to the meeting, I was approached by the chairman and a couple more, wondering would that be something that the city might consider, since the county had done it and that they put in a lot of time and effort? And, and I said, certainly, I didn't, you know, I didn't think that the council would be opposed to that, but that I couldn't speak on your behalf, but I would bring it to your attention. What the county did was to approve paying their planning commission members $50 per meeting, but you have to attend the meeting to be paid. It's not an automatic, well, you get it, you get so much a month, whether you come or you don't. And so I did advise them that I would bring that to y'all's attention at the next meeting, and allow you all to consider that. And if you all decide that's something you want to move forward on, let us know, and we can address that next month.
I think it should have been done a long time ago.
And so, that's all I have, Mayor.
I just wanted to say a word, I know I say it every meeting, but you department heads and stuff, with the fire, and the police, and the recreation, and the animal shelter, all you people, it works. And I think I speak for everybody. I see what you're doing in this town. I'm all over this town, and I see what y'all are doing. And I just wanted to tell you, we appreciate you again. If I say it every meeting, you just have to listen to it, because I do appreciate it.
Terry's going to draw up ordinance for the next council meeting.
To consideration.
To consideration, the $50 per meeting for the planning commission.
Okay.
If they attend?
If they attend.
That, that was the stipulation the county put on it, and that would be my recommendation if you do it.
I think that's the best way to do it.
That being a ten that's required. Yes, sir.
Okay, is that all, James?
Yes, sir, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Moving to appointments of boards, I have appointed, reappointed Rick Carr to the planning commission, and Charles Rathbone, his term was up as well, and he didn't want to serve anymore. So I have moved Randall Freeman, who temporarily served, into that position. And on the library board, replacing Mary Loftus, I've appointed Elizabeth Parker to her position, because Martha didn't want to serve anymore. And out of respect to you guys, I'd like for y'all to ratify that by a vote. So do we have a motion to approve my appointments?
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
That's a good decision, maybe.
Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Thank you. Item seven, Tanner Preservation Alliance Report.
I just wanted to bring to you announcements that we are hosting a motorcycle fundraiser that will start at the Tanner Building and end at the, the route will start at the Tanner Building and end at the Tanner Building. It will be June the 25th, and we encourage all the motorcyclists to come out and participate in that, that event. We're calling it the Kick Stands Up for Preservation.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Starts at 11:00. Starts at 11:00. Starts at 11:00. Now...
Maria Sawbar, your motorcycle.
Just say what you do.
I have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Dykes tomorrow. We're going to set out the route, and then I don't know what we can do to help get traffic going in and out.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Garland. Okay, old business, consideration of second reading of ordinance 2016-03, City of Newport budget for fiscal year 2016-2017.
Yes, Mayor, that's ordinance number 2016-03, in order to City of Newport adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the City of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget for, on the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please. Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B on the second page is consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2016-04, Budget Amendment for the City of Newport for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2016-04, in ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2015-2016.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment on the second reading?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please. Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is consideration of second reading of ordinance 2016-05, the budget amendment for Newport Grammar School for the fiscal year 2015-2016. Do we have a motion to approve?
And Mayor, let me read that.
I'm sorry.
That's ordinance number 2016-05, in ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2015-2016 for Newport Grammar School.
Now, do we have a motion to approve the Newport Grammar Schools?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Got a second? Any discussion? Row call, please. Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble?
Yes.[1670.93]
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you. Under new business, item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2016-06, the financial policy for the City of Newport.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2016-06, in ordinance to establish an internal control manual for the City of Newport, Tennessee. That'd be the first reading.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, just for the record, just to be advised, this is something that has been mandated by the state and it's just, you know, it's something you really don't have a, an option on. It's a requirement they have, that they have put out there and we're just meeting the requirement they put on us.
We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Yes. We're adopting the five principles, but we, I mean, the five, the five main sports, but we are not adopting the 17 principles. I didn't, is that correct?
Well, no, we've got, the principles are also in there.
So we are, we're adopting the five?
You're adopting the five main components.
And the 17 principles. Okay, all right. Thank you, that clarification team.
Any other comments or discussion?
What's the turnaround time of, let's say, Tim, your department, when you collect money, have it put in the bank? Forty, two, one business day, two business days?
One business day. We deposit daily and we usually do our countdown about 3:30. The only time you'll see a difference is when you have a holiday or you have weekend collections that'll come in on the next business day.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. I hear none. Item B is consideration of the CHIP program funding.
Mayor, that's the program that Jimmy Clark and the other guy came at the end of the last meeting and talked about, about the fingerprinting. And Chief Schultz is going to address that. As you all know, the, the, a child going missing is one of all of our worst fears. And on occasion, we have that happen locally. Just recently, we had a couple of children that were almost abducted according to reports. And there's no way that we could ever spend enough to prevent that from happening or to make it any easier. But if you all would consider helping to implement this program, I would like to be able to sit down with Tina. We've looked at my numbers for my budget where we've scraped and saved a little bit. I'd like to be able to try to pull those numbers together out of my budget and fund this through the Newport Police Department. That way, we could be part of the initial program. I, as a Shriner and a Mason, have a great belief in what they stand for. And I think this is just one of the greatest things we could do to, to help provide families with confidence that we have the most recent technologies in place to help find their children. And secondly, it, you know, you just can't do enough to help protect children or help locate them if they do go missing.
Appreciate you, Maria.
Yes.
Thinking about that, trying to help out of your budget and stuff. I appreciate that.
That would, if you all would consider that, I will gladly work within my budget and try to circulate the funds around enough that we can have that paid for.
I move that we consider the CHIP program funding.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item C is consideration of contract between the City of Newport and the East Tennessee Development District for planning services.
Mayor, this is just the annual renewal. We've been with them for many, many years and this is just our, an annual renewal with them to utilize their services.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we use them any last year?
I'm pretty sure we did. I think they did, where Ben, I think they used, Ben uses them like when we did the recycling grants last year, we got, I'm pretty sure, is that not right, Ben?
Yes.
Yes, sir. They, they, because that's what, that's primarily what they work on is, is grants. And, and so we did, they, they did and we are working on some for this year too. We're trying, we didn't, last year, we got the, what was it? The containers, but not the burner. And this year, we've put in, they're putting in for the burner for us to, where we can heat the building out there using recycled oil.
So are they proactive?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Very good batch.
Is this mandated or just suggested?
Well, I mean, if you all want to, we have to, you all have to approve to continue on with them for another year.
Right.
What, does this cost about what? $9,800? How much it costs a year?
$9,250.
Pardon?
$9,250.
$9,250.
Two installments?
It probably saved you more than that.
I couldn't give you a number on what, what we received. It's more than that, but I couldn't get, I couldn't begin to give you a number.
Had them for a long time.
Yeah, they, the bins, all of our recycling bins.
Been going on since I've been here and they've always been very, very good to help the city.
I make a motion to accept.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Thank you. Item D is consideration of T-Dot Highway Maintenance Contract.
Again, this is an annual thing that has to be renewed with the state of Tennessee. This is a, I think the amount's the same as what, 52, 54,000, something like that. It's where we do work along the state highways inside the city limits and we build the state and they reimburse us for it. It's been in place, I'm thinking, since 93 or 94 and we've done it ever since then. And it's, it's a big help for us because it's repairs that need to be made in town anyway and then they, they reimburse us for them. We bill them and they pay us for doing the, fixing potholes and that kind of stuff inside the city.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item M is consideration of property sale on White Oak and Mineral Street. Mr. McSwain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jim McSwain, local attorney. I'm here at the request of Jeff Green, who is your tax attorney. The council may be aware that this property is located at, on White Oak, 318 White Oak Street. It was sold at the tax sale several months ago and the total property taxes city and county for which it was sold, according to the figures that I was furnished, was $3,117. The, and the, and the city and the county bought it at the tax sale. There were no other bidding parties at the tax sale. Consequently, you have ended up with the property. Mr. Green has received a bid from John W. Parker, who is a neighbor up there, of $3,250 for the property. The procedure, as I understand it, is that with your authorization, this property will now be advertised and sold at auction. And what it brings in excess of the taxes themselves, the county gets their taxes, the city gets their taxes. So far, you hadn't gotten any dollars out of it. But when it's sold, you get your tax money, county gets their tax money. And if it brings more than that, then the agreement with the county is that the excess is divided 50/50. The city gets a half of it and the county gets the other half. And the county legislative body at its last session authorized Jeff Green, the tax attorney, to proceed with the sale. And that's what we're asking council to do is authorize your tax attorney to proceed with this sale of the property at, on White Oak Street. I noticed that your agenda includes Mineral Street. I have no knowledge about that particular thing.
I think it's on the corner.
It's on the corner, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's on the corner, yeah.
Do we have a, a motion to, to carry through with this?
I make a motion strongly because everything that I've heard, everybody says, get rid of that. If you get anything, beats nothing because you're going to be hung on to it.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Mark, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. The city has been cleaning up the property for several years. The cost for those cleanups need to be added to the total if, if we can do that. Jeff Green has the invoices, I believe, for the cleanup.
We split the difference with the counties. Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
They pay half, but we pay half of the cleanup bill.
Well, the city's paid 100% of it.
I know, but I said if it's sold, though.
If it's sold, the city should get our costs back out of it before the county receives 50% of the remainder.
Why don't you add that to your, to your motion?
Yeah. You want to add that to your motion and second?
So we're talking what, a dollar amount, Mark?
I don't recall offhand. I think it's, seems like it was probably close to $2,500 so far. And this gentleman sitting back here is preparing to clean the property coming up this next week. Yes, it's in pretty bad shape at present.
Maybe we shouldn't add this too much, gentlemen.
Yeah.
You what?
My recommendation would be that the purchase price is not going to bring enough to, to reimburse us unfortunately. It will probably only pay the delinquent taxes. And if the city can get those, we'll be ahead of the game.
Right.
And what's happened's happened.
Exactly.
Can I make that motion to sell as stated in the agreement with Mr. Parker?
Okay. Okay, if y'all got that, ladies. Just one second.
So we're going to be losing $2,500, we're going to be gaining the delinquent taxes.
You probably had nothing and hoping it's going to be better than nothing, even though it's just taking our people to do it. But monetary wise, you're not going to be losing, you're going to be gaining.
How many years you been cleaning up?
You're going to be losing the money that we've got in it, $2,500 or whatever it is, right, Mark?
Yes. Ben Nix had.
That's equipment, gas.
Equipment used and labor, yes. Initially, it was, it was pretty hefty.
So we got a motion, just a motion. Who made that motion? Okay, and you seconded, right? To deal with it as written.
Need to get rid of it.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, you're welcome. Item F is consideration of approval of a floor scrubber for the City of Newport.
Mayor, we would ask that that be postponed to a later date. We may have found a used one as opposed to buying a new one. And so we would like to postpone that to see how this, this other option works out.
Okay. Okay, we'll move into item 10, bids. Item A is consideration of bid of paving for fiscal year 2016-2017. Do we have your bids there in your notebook?
On this, there was only the one bid that came in for Newport, from Newport Paving and Ready Mix with $8,475 for the hot mix.
You satisfied that, Ben?
It's down to the bottom of my students.
Well, that's good. Do we have a motion to approve that bid?
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of bids of fence for the street department.
On this bid, again, we only had one person to turn in. It was shoemakers for $6,551 on this fence.
You okay with that, Ben?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, please.
Yes, absolutely.
I move to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item C is consideration of bids of elliptical for the community center.
On this bid, we had three come in, one from Fitworks, which is the True brand, at $9,350. It had three-year parts and labor. The other two bids both came from Direct Fitness. The Precor brand came in at $7,800 with a two-year warranty on parts, one year on labor. Spirit brand at $4,800, five years on parts, two years on the labor. Tim has researched these. From what he, his research indicates, the Direct Fitness, both of the units that they have put on the bid are light commercial. Fitworks True brand is the only heavy-duty commercial that meets what he needs for the community center. So that, even though it is higher, it's the only one that truly meets what he needs, that Fitworks True brand.
That Precor, did you say?
Yes. If you remember, Precor did bid last time as well and it came in higher than the Fitworks brand because it was a heavier-duty model. And in this bid, they've lowered their model and lowered their price, but it's not the same quality.
That what you need, Tim? Is that what you guess? Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Tim's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no?
No.
Comments from citizens? Yes, Garland.
I wanted to ask the council about this month, where we will be observing World Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And it's, June the 15th is the annual celebration day or awareness day. And I wanted to ask the council if I could put up some banners out there by the city Christmas tree on that corner.
Tim. See, Tim.
Okay. And also, the, the other thing that I wanted to mention, I had asked the council about supporting my transportation program that I'm trying to bring to Cock County. I have a deadline for, for meeting my, my matching funds is June the 30th. So I will not, the grant, that is the deadline for submitting the grant with the matching funds. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And, and if someone could, you know, possibly let me know one way or the other. I am still looking for funds for that, that program other places, but if you can help in any way, I'd appreciate it.
How much are you needing for that?
$2,500. It's a matching grant of, matching funds are $5,000 and I have $2,500 already, so.
Garland, I appreciate what you do. I know you've done some efforts a little and I know it's frustrating to you, but I appreciate what you've tried to do.
Thank you.
Our first station, too, is almost complete. Thanks again for y'all funding that and taking care of where they're refurbishing it. Anyway, we think we should have everything back going probably by the end of next week, but we have, and Tina's been helping us with this too, and of course, all of them in City Hall have. We're planning on having an open house once we get it all complete. And of course, y'all are invited to come over and see where we've come, where we're at. And you saw the pictures of where we came from. So, but thanks again.
We're real happy that they're getting it back because they provided us with the AED and emergency services at that station for our alcohol. So it's a blessing to have them there.
Any other comments from citizens? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have one thing to say.
Sure.
Fortunately, or unfortunately, I rolled up on that rig on Highway 321 yesterday that no one was hurt. People hurt, but all lives are spared. And Chief Schultz was on the scene as well and just the way you controlled the scene, even though out of your jurisdiction, I guess, y'all be of the county, I just want to commend you the way you took charge over, especially the way you handled little kids there. It's kind of moving to watch. And second of all, just got back day before yesterday from eight days in Honduras. Eye-opening and moving for me. And I just want to thank Bobby Knight for helping sponsor me to go. A lot of lives were transformed and thanks to Bobby, I got to go along with my wife, along with 13 other guys out of Asheville. So appreciate what we got here in Newport. Sometimes they say it's not enough, but go over there and stay a week, see what you, you'll appreciate what you don't have and what you do have. So I just wanted to publicly thank Bobby for, for helping me.
Lisa, I'd like to thank you too for being up there all night when the boys getting dog bit and the neighbors telling him, he won't bite you. Blood running down both legs and she said, he won't bite you, don't eat him, he won't bite you. But I appreciate you being up there trying to defuse that situation. Thank you.
Justin, you want to give a speech?
No.
I'm just going to give you the floor. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll pass.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? I can do the official cleanup.